Yes, sir.
All right.
Take the mic.
All right. Microphone's working? How's the video doing? Ah, terrific. Okay. We have a quorum. And I call us to order. This is a great day in Kershaw County, in this all-American county. We move into an important period of our census. I want everybody to take that away as a takeaway. The census moves from electronic only to some visitations. We may hear more about that later. At this meeting, we are also operating under our rules as a virtual or e-meeting. And we'll continue in that fashion. Everyone is spaced as much as they can be in this room. And we're looking at certain protocols that are driven by the fact that this small county, though 21st in population, is 11th in the state on number of cases with the COVID virus. And by the end of this weekend, we may very well go above 700 cases. Uh, we move into an important period of our census. I want everybody to take that away as a takeaway. The census moves from electronic only to some visitations. We may hear more about that later. Uh, at this meeting, we are also operating under our rules as a virtual or e-meeting. And we'll continue in that fashion. Everyone is spaced as much as they can be in this room. And, uh, we're looking at certain protocols that are driven by the fact that this small county, though twenty-first in population, is eleventh in the state on number of cases with the COVID virus. And by the end of this weekend, we may very well go above seven hundred cases. That is, in the month of June, we've had as many cases in thirty days as we had in the previous a hundred days. So that's a bit of a challenge. So I ask you to all remember that and as we enjoy our final meeting of the fiscal year and our first meeting before the Fourth of July. With that, we are called to order. We have a quorum of all members present. And with that, I ask Councilman Bozard to lead us in the invocation and pledge. Would you please stand?
All right, pray. Good and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. This day you have given us as a gift. Father, I pray we will use it for good and we will never regret the price we paid for it. Father, for this meeting we are having tonight, I pray that your hand will be here. We will look for you for our guidance and always give you the blessings for everything that comes to you. Lord, for this country we are in right now, I pray for our country. I pray for our leaders. Father, I pray for our president, that he can withstand all this pressure that's on him and he can handle everything that's coming to him. With your help, I know that will happen. For this meeting we have tonight, Father, I pray that your blessings and your power will be right here with us as we go about the county business. For all we ask in the great and holy name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
My pleasure, ladies.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. As we now move to the next item, which is, uh, public comments. Let me first make a couple of points. First of all, we have councilman-to-be, that is almost honorable, Russell Brazel. Sir, I congratulate you. Thank you for coming today and thank you for running. I also thank, and I know all of us do, April Watch, for also stepping up to take the job. It was, uh, a public service and we need people to step up and to help us make this and continue to make it a great county. Uh, the first part of that is, under our rules as a virtual meeting, we, uh, take comments, uh, sent in to the county clerk. Uh, Mary, do we have any comments? Okay, with that, we'll also go actual. Uh, Mr. DeBoz, are there any comments?
One person signed up, Tom Webb III.
Okay, Mr. Webb, you've come forward. We have put a limit of five minutes. And the rules during this are it's to hear from you and no questions back. This is not an exchange, but to hear from those of the public that are here. It's not a time for debate. Please keep your comments, uh, inside the business of the county. Uh, attacking no one and inappropriate and offensive language is not, will not be accepted. Delighted to hear from you, sir. Please go ahead.
Well, I have proclaimed June to be D-Day month. And I've been standing on the corner, holding a sign and getting very good response. The other side of the sign says, "Their Lives for Your Freedom." And I think we've been a little careless with that freedom from time to time. So many people for so long have given so much to try to keep us free. And, um, it seems like it's, um, that we've turned into little lambs right here. We're, we're really at war right here on our own land. Um, it's hard to say all of who might be involved in that. I think China really has taken a big part in this. Um, they, they kind of put on a play with their Wuhan virus. They, they probably killed off a lot of dissidents blaming it on the virus. But they set that thing loose on the rest of the world and it has brought us down. It scared so many people that the hysteria has shut down the country and the economy. It's going to be really hard to ever get that back. I think it could have been avoided. Um, I've heard, um, from doctors, I've seen it in writing and I've heard on radios and some programs where doctors said that there was this, uh, three-part, um, cocktail that worked on the coronavirus. And that was the chloroquine, um, antibiotic, azithromycin and zinc. So this would only have been something that was used probably when a person's already developing pneumonia. I'm not sure what the chloroquine does. It's said that it enhances the effect of the zinc, which is the antiviral part. The azithromycin is an antibiotic. It doesn't have any effect on, on a virus, but it's for, um, secondary infections. And an awful lot of people that died in these nursing homes died from a, um, a secondary infection, a type of pneumonia. Uh, so I can tell you what, what zinc has meant to me. It's only anecdotal evidence. Anecdotal evidence means just a story. It's, it's not been proven by any test, but, uh, you know, mama would have told you when you were a child and it was cold weather, put on some dry socks and don't get your feet wet and keep your head warm and, um, keep, keep your gloves on. Or you'd catch a death of a cold. Well, this virus is a coronavirus. And I think the same thing applies. That we do need to stay warmer than we should be and take zinc. It's a, it's a, it's a multi-part procedure. It's not a cure, it's a treatment. The zinc is antiviral and if a person is warmer than they should be, very much warmer. And you, you look down through history, people have used saunas and, um, the Indians used their, their, their sweat lodges. These things work to some extent, very much enhanced by zinc. In my own experience in treating the common cold for half of my life, I found out about it from reading about, um, zinc being good for the little canker sores that people get in their mouths sometimes. You have episodes of this. It's a herpes simplex. Zinc really helps. So I started using it when I felt a cold coming on. It doesn't cure a cold, but it sets it back. It keeps you from sneezing in people's faces, from having to blow your nose and from coughing. The virus is still there, but your immune system is working on it. And the best immunity is that natural immunity that you get from fighting a disease and overcoming it. So I think that, um, that zinc has been overlooked. And I, I wonder, because I'm somewhat of a skeptical person, if it hadn't been done on purpose. Because there's no money to be made in zinc. It's dug out of the ground. It's very cheap. Big Pharma can't make any money on zinc. They can make some money on these other things that are coming along. And, uh, who knows what's in some of these vaccines that we're going to be subject to. Uh, the mask, um, people are wearing masks because of, I think, a hysteria mostly that we don't really know how effective it is, maybe a little bit. But it definitely is a, it's a sign of submission. It's a sign of submission to something. We all have to be in this together and, uh, just do whatever the experts say. And I really have my doubts about some of the experts. So that's pretty well what I wanted to say, but I wanted to end this with my poem that I like to read once a year in June, "D-Day Men." For the great, honorable people that have done so much for us that we tend to forget about. "D-Day Men." He's a man too young to cast a vote, but he's cast upon the sea, the crowd aboard a landing boat or the beach at Normandy. The moon and tide affect his ride and his boots fill up with water. Though fate decides perhaps he dies, he'll give the Reich no quarter. From the awful ocean wreckage to the strand of bloody sand, time plays tricks to stop and stand. Then up the hill and on ahead, it seems unreal and always will, so many men so dead. Now anywhere these rifles reach, the lessons clear they came to teach. Men are not just lumps of coal to feed a Nazi fire or any other ism that steals a man's desire. And like those men from way back then who fought the New World Order, we'll have to fight that sin again that's here inside our border. Socialism's creeping while the world again is sleeping and nothing's ever over as we carry on a load. There's a battle always brewing further down the road. So celebrate the honor, the duty and the glory when someone special comes our way to tell the D-Day story. Lily Marlene, the cliffs of Dover and don't sit under the apple tree. A rhythm, a rhyme, a melody of some old favorite tune. And we're back to forty-four again, and then the sixth of June. All those ships and planes and tanks are men with higher ranks. And all of y'all without much say, of course you have our thanks. Even the Huns who fought in vain to cuss you while retreating. Y'all saved them from a harsher fame and they'll thank you for the beating. Anyway, I'm glad to say, real Americans ain't to blame. And when they heard their country's call, the D-Day men all came. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, and happy Fourth of July, sir. Uh, with that, Mr. DeBoz?
No one else signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And that ends our public comments. We move now into the formal review of the budget. The first step today is a public hearing in regards to an audience, an ordinance to provide budget appropriations for county purposes in the county of Kershaw for the fiscal year beginning, uh, one July tomorrow and ending thirty June, 2021, and adopt and implement the charge and collection of service and user fees and rates and for other tax purposes and county appropriations purposes. I open the hearing. And Mary, do you confirm we had no comments?
No one signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Let me just go ahead and close the hearing. And we move on to the adoption of agenda. Uh, it's on the screen for you there and it's also at your desks and your electronic devices. And can we take a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? I'll only say that I had received a number of comments when people were confused, uh, that Camden was taking on an agenda item about masks. And our answer is the agenda is approved. For this council has no agenda item regarding masks. Uh, with that, we can, yeah, Mr. Snodgrass? Uh, I thank many of you for helping us straighten out our public. And, uh, with that, we move to, uh, vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and you have the agenda. We move now to approval of minutes. Uh, the first one is for June, 2020, for a call meeting. It's at Annex A, and if you are on your electronic devices, it's on page four. If you move along to that location, uh, the minutes are there. Can we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Chairman?
Yeah, discussion?
I will not be voting on this, I wasn't present.
Okay, so you'll abstain. Thank you. Any others? Okay, with that, we move to a vote with no comments. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous with Mr. Bozard abstaining. We move to nine June, uh, 2020, uh, tab B, it's at page six. If you go forward to that and it's also on the screen, right Danny? Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tucker, vice chair, is second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Uh, any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, uh, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and Mary, you have your minutes. With that, we move to a public presentation. It's at tab C, I believe you're going to, can you, is it going to be shown on the screen? Okay, very good. Uh, and will be led by, uh, Mr. Harpinder, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, of his counsel, does an update on current status of the, um, situation with the COVID disease. You see the graphs in front of you on the screen. It shows a steady increase, of course, the total number of cases have grown. Uh, it, the last month, the chairman said, the, uh, the amount of cases is, um, equal to the previous almost three months prior to it. Today, we had twenty-six cases in Kershaw County. State of South Carolina had one thousand seven hundred and forty-one new cases reported, seventeen deaths as well. Um, of, our, our local situation is, of course, it's fairly, uh, I hate to use word routine, but we are, are used to the environment that we're, we're living in at the moment. As the chairman alluded to, the city of Camden just a little bit ago passed a, uh, the city ordinance requiring the use of masks inside. So you'll start seeing more issues like that, I believe, in our, in our cities and our states around, um, South Carolina and the country as these numbers go up. Of interest to me is our hospitalization rate is still fairly steady to what it was three months ago. Um, we are statewide, about seventy-one and a half percent of the beds are currently in use. We're about the same rate we were. Uh, younger people are getting it now. Um, the, uh, positive rate for infection today was nineteen percent. So nineteen percent of the cases that were tested were positive. If you recall back in March, we were dealing with a infection rate of about one to two percent were coming in as positive. So interesting things are happening with it, but I guess of most importance and significance is the mortality rate in Kershaw County is flat. We have not had an announced, and God willing, we will not have an announced one, uh, for about a month. And our hospital bed utilization is fairly stable.
Very good. Let's open for questions and discussions, please.
Just one.
Uh, Mr. Bozard, sir.
With the people that have been tested positive, our death rate has not gone up in over a month. Is that right?
Not in Kershaw at all, correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
For, yeah.
Fourteen.
Yep. Other comments?
Just a question.
Yeah, Dan, please.
How particularly alarming is this trend in your view, given there's so much more testing? Like on the drive over here, I saw some people lined up outside at a COVID-19 testing tent. So I'm not necessarily surprised that the infection rate for a communicable respiratory disease would increase if you test a lot more. I was encouraged to hear you say that the mortality rate, uh, or at least over the last month, hasn't increased. I, I think with the additional testing, another month or two will really tell us, um, whether or not there is a lag there or not. But what are your thoughts on that?
Of course, I'm not, you know, a doctor. Um, but I would say that from the beginning, as you, as you recall, what we were told was the issue in trying to flatten the curve, remember that term? Was so that we didn't overload the hospitals. And, and we were trying not to keep people from getting sick. We're trying to keep from the hospitals being overloaded so we didn't lose people who couldn't get the level of care they needed. So that seems to be what's, what's happening right now, is the hospitals are not being overloaded. I mean, they're, they're not in a great place, but they're in a better spot than, than the fear was. I went back and checked and in March, they were predicting that by May, we would be at about eight thousand cases. And I remember that being thrown around. And when that date actually came, we were only about eighty percent of that. We were about sixty-four hundred. So the, the initial spread of it was, was slower than, than the projections were. Of course, now, as you see, the fourteen-day average has gone up significantly more over those averages, but with the hospitalization rate being held steady, um, you know, I, I would say, just as a layman, that, that that's a good sign. I, I take some, some, um, hope in that, that our, our hospitalization rate is able to deal with people who are sick enough that they require, um, to be put in a negative pressure, a room, and they, and they might need intubation and a ventilator, that it's available for them.
And that was going to be my follow-up, is it seems like a lot of people were just treating at home. I, I had, uh, some extended family members and, and friends locally who tested positive and they expressed, I understand it impacts different people differently, but they were able to treat at home for five or six days and then, uh, go back to work after being given the all-clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? Uh, Mr. Gardner, sir?
I, I, I think obviously if you test more, you're going to have more positive results. But the numbers, to me, if you go back and look at when things started opening back up a month ago, uh, the numbers started going up. So I, I think it's obvious that it's, there's more cases based on that simple fact. I think you look at the numbers, you go back to Memorial Day or so, right, right in that timeframe, and here we are thirty days later and cases have doubled. So to me, you know, it, it just says that, uh, yeah, more tests is going to be more positives, but because we opened things back up, uh, we have more cases. So I think the mask, uh, you know, and I, I know people have different opinions of it, but I believe that, uh, masks will keep it from spreading. So that's why I wear one. Thank you.
To this point, I'll, I'll have a commentary that says we've relied on the discipline and the common sense, uh, public appeal of our citizens to, to exercise good hygiene, social distancing, masking and so on where appropriate. And so we as a county have not directed anything. Here's a good example, we've been focusing on all the terrible things. But here is a business owner that says, "Over one thousand boats and another one thousand cars come to our area to watch fireworks on the Fourth of July." And I'm just kind of picking some phrases to shorten this discussion. "Fireworks is my favorite thing to do, but I am not willing, as a business owner, to put a single life at risk to make another dollar. There's a time to make money and a time to be safe. There's a time for gatherings and there are times we should not. So as much as I want to give the community a great fireworks show, I simply will not," it goes on. I call the young lady up and thanked her for that spirit of common sense to protect our, our people when you have social gatherings. Uh, a clarification from you, Vic. Do we know what the time and date is of the Camden policy? And what that means, not just for us citizens walking around, but what does it mean for businesses? Do we have any information on that?
I've not seen a copy of it, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I would, I don't know when it actually is formally, um, taken into, uh, into effect. I would say that-
Friday morning.
Friday? Do you have a time, Jimmy?
They just-
Six o'clock?
Chief just told me Friday morning.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I saw six. I will, as a, um, as an entity doing business within the city limits, I will- I will, as a, as an entity doing business within the city limits, I will obey their ordinance, and I will expect our employees to obey them while they're in city limits. And we will handle it accordingly with our buildings that are in city limits. We will follow the city of Camden's, because they have made this an ordinance, we obey the law here.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
I talked to the sheriff today, and I also talked to Chief Floyd. And of course, he gave me the information as to what the city was doing. And as I had said before in this chamber, I will not wear a mask unless, you know, it becomes a law. And if it becomes a law, I will certainly obey the law, which it has. And I will abide by that in the city of Camden. And any business that asks me to wear one, I'll wear one, but otherwise, I'm not.
Yeah. Yeah, and what I've done is asked the attorney and administrator to take a take a copy of laws that have been passed that affect us, and that's Camden so far, and Elgin is considering one. And make sure it's clear to us and our citizens what that means when you come into the domain of the county, of the city. Further, there are some limitations on that guidance, and we want to know what that is. And so Mr. DeBoz is exploring that with the Attorney General. Ken, can you just talk to the one issue with regard to the difference between what the Attorney General said about the authority of municipalities and the authority of counties? And try not to take us into the letter of the law, make it simple, if you would.
I'll make it simple. Simple legally, to the extent it can be simple. The AG, Attorney General Alan Wilson, excuse me, issued a statement on June 24, 2020. And the first operative substantive sentence is in the second paragraph. And it says, quote, "The only question before my office is whether a city can lawfully pass this type of ordinance." So the rest of the statement is predicated on his caveat that the only question before my office is whether a city can lawfully pass this type of ordinance. And the substantive portions of the statement he issues deals with cities. Nowhere in his statement does he indicate, imply implicitly or explicitly that counties can or cannot enact face-mask ordinances.
So it's an open question, then?
Yes, he has not addressed it.
Is that helpful to everybody?
Okay. Other discussion?
Well, it tells me, if I may, Mr. Chairman, it tells me that law may be good or it may not be good.
Well, he said cities can.
But not counties, what is open ended with counties.
Correct. He says cities can, but he never addresses counties. Okay, got it? All right, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to say I was over in Columbia pretty much most of the day working, doing students. And I had to use the restroom in one of the local franchise restaurants. And on the door, it stated, "No mask, no service." And I watched them turn around, two couples that was in there not willing or didn't have their masks and not serviced them, and asked them to go back and get a mask. I'm of the belief of Councilman Gardner here, that's sitting to my left, that this thing is real. And if you don't think it's real, just be kind enough and responsible enough not to disrespect other people's wishes by social distancing and staying away from others and not congregating. Because I think as this thing and the numbers keep going in the wrong direction, the less I'm talking to people. I'm giving virtual hugs, kisses, and goodbyes with hand signals because I don't want to get infected nor infect others, especially the older population that I deal with.
Very good, thank you. I think we're ready to move on, unless there's further discussion?
I have something to say.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
First off, Mr. Tucker, I appreciate what you just said. I think it's a matter of opinion on which side you're on, and I respect yours, I just don't agree with it. Now, let me just say this. I don't think, I don't think you folks wearing a mask is a sign of submission. I don't think that. I think you're truly wearing it because you believe it will help you or help somebody else. I just don't have that belief, I just don't, I just don't see that. And I was talking to one of my, but I told you I'd obey the law. But I was talking to one of my colleagues before I walked in here, and I want to embarrass him by calling his name. But he said that he was called, he's wearing his mask, he said, because out of respect for our councilman who called him and politely asked him would he wear it because his health wasn't that good. My first question was, why doesn't the councilman stay home if his health is not that good and do a teleconference? And then, you know, the bottom line is, I also told this councilman that nobody ever called me and politely asked me to wear a mask, you know, because of their health. But there's no submission in this whatsoever. I'm doing, I'm gonna obey the law if the mask is the law. And I'm gonna put one on for Mr. Gardner, even though I don't agree with anything he does much on county council, but I'm gonna do this for him because his health is not good. He is subject to a lot of things that are going on. But I'm gonna do this out of respect for you, Mr. Gardner. You're welcome. And you, but I just wanted to know, there is no submission on my part.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna mention that, we really don't know what's going on or how effective any of the treatments are at this point. There haven't been, you know, haven't been involved in drug litigation for years and years, and you have to look at the studies that are required by the FDA to go on for five-plus years or longer sometimes. Even then, they have a pretty good idea of what's going on, and here, the coronavirus has just hit us. I mean, the most recent data I've looked at on masks, if we're gonna work off of data, is mandatory mask counties, which I guess they disagree with Alan Wilson in California, Mr. DeBoz, where some are mandatory mask wearers and some are not, and the infection rates are the same with very similar populations. So, you know, that doesn't mean the mask is a variable in any meaningful way. However, there's something to be said for it, I think there's data on each side. And I think kindness was the word that was used, or politeness, out of consideration for others. If it helps, perhaps it does. I don't know that government should be mandating and be a nanny in some way, trying to impact what people's individual decisions are. But that's really all I had to say about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Mr. Jones?
How do you breathe out of these things without your glasses fogging up?
It helps if you brush your teeth.
I think your nose hairs are constricting the airflow. Mr. Tucker?
I just wanna, I wasn't gonna share this story, but I'm gonna share it. I was talking to a principal here at Kershaw County Schools, and the individual told me, said, you know, Mr. Tucker, I really don't like wearing pants, but we gotta wear them so we don't be outside naked. And when you get home, you get to do what you want to do. The mask is not much difference, it's out of respect and kindness to others. And you can do what you want to do when you get home. I mean, you can breathe with no mask, get on the ventilator and practice, whatever you want to do. No one's trying to invade into your privacy, we just want to have a little bit of consideration in public for others. And, you know, I just, I can't tell you all the data points because there's, you know, I think Ben said it best, there's data on both sides, it's depending who you're talking to or what channel you're watching. But I like my chances with the mask and the social distancing because I feel that that's a better survival rate for me.
Mr. Tucker, if I may, for clarity, I just want you to know that it's gonna, the next council meeting, the next council meeting is gonna be a law. That's why, so what's one meeting for me? And then, if it makes Mr. Gardner feel better, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
But I don't agree with what you just said.
Other comments? Excellent briefing by Mr. Carpenter, and to all the team that have kept us on the straight and narrow these last 100-and-some-odd days, thank you, sir. With that, we move into the rest of the item, which is a resolution. A resolution approving financing terms for capital leases, it's at Tab D, or Page 11, for those of you following electronically. Mr. Carpenter, have it introduce this topic, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, capital lease that we have in front of it is for the annual payments that we make every year. Part of the budget, part of the approved funds, we just ask the council approve that as we have done every other year.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any questions for Mr. Carpenter, and maybe Sandra while we go on?
Could he give some clarification as to what we pay for the public? Can you give some clarification as to what the capital pays for?
Sure, I've got Sandra.
Just for information only.
Yeah, well, have Sandra come on up. How you doing, Sandra?
I mean, we don't need a dissertation, I just figured a couple of things.
She'll do it quicker than I'll.
We purchased two pieces of equipment.
I get close to the mic there.
We purchased two pieces of equipment this year, one was a service truck for Public Works, and we also posted like a loader for solid waste. So the two pieces together was $261,000, $261,021. The lowest interest rate was 1.37%.
Ms. Brown, you do a great job, but I can't hear a thing you're saying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can drop the mask if you need to talk.
Yeah.
Okay, we purchased two pieces of equipment this year. One was a nice service truck for Public Works. And we also got a piece of equipment for solid waste. Both of them together was the $261,021. And the lease is gonna be for three years, and the first payment will start in May of 2021. The interest rate is 1.37%.
Good rate. I answer your question, Jimmy?
It does, well, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, well, she certainly could rattle those numbers off. Any other questions? I think that's straightforward, and it's in the budget, so we can go ahead to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, thank you, Senator, thank you, Vic. Now we get to the main event, which is the third reading of an ordinance to provide budget appropriations for county purposes in the county of Kershaw. As we already had in the open forum, it's on page, I think, 12. And it's up on the board. I'd also point out to you before I have Mr. Carpenter introduce, at each of your seats, you should have a copy of a proposed amendment to the budget from the second reading. It's a one-pager. And we'll introduce that, I'm gonna ask the Vice Chair to bring that in. Secondly, we have a chart we used last time, which showed high, medium, and low priority for 20 and for 21. And it compared those against what the core group brought us in Provision 2030, and where we had votes in this chamber to approve these as our objectives. And it shows what was canceled or not gonna be funded this year because of what's happened to us. The second, the third item is a three-pager, Kershaw County Budget Comparison between FY '20 Actual and '21. It's the same ones, I think, as we had last meeting on the second reading. And on the second page of that, there are some key assumptions made, I think you ought to look at it, such as the value of the mill. And the third thing before I have Mr. Carpenter open this up for discussion is a direct comparison between the '20 budget and the '21 budget. So with that, Mr. Carpenter, I'm gonna ask you to brief us, but first, tell us, introduce the topic. And before I bring in the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman of this council, you have before you tonight for third reading, the 2020-2021 county budget. As the chairman has already so adequately and eloquently done, the budget in front of you is a budget that is based on Page 2, which are assumptions of expenses and revenues, as well as showing you where any cuts were made to the budget. Because of the uncertain times we're in, this is a budget that held the ground with where we were in our previous budget. It has no increases for salaries, it has no increases in staffing. It makes cuts to the tune of about $640,000 of operational expenses that are not necessary or that are believed necessary to make the cuts in areas such as mostly fuel, travel, training, equipment, operating expenses, things like that.
I was gonna have you brief in detail after we put a motion out, okay?
Okay.
If you can just hold there, just as a protocol matter. Can we have a motion to approve the budget from the second reading? On this, the third reading? Can we have a motion?
So made.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
Second, all right, for Mr. Gardner. Go ahead, Vic, I'm sorry, I put you off of stride there.
Yeah, again, the, it's not a whole lot to go into in the sense that the budget is essentially the same budget, there was holding the line with it. The amendments that'll be made are reflective of that the county staff is required to present to council recommendations for the use of any anticipated excess in funds from the previous year's budget. We were able to, this morning, Sandra, myself, and Mr. Templar were able to come up with some recommendations for approximately $600,000 of money that we will be recommending be transferred from the reserves of the county. This is excess funds for the current budget into the next year's general fund and the capital project fund for that.
We started the process with a $3 million hole, and I think the team has delivered some amazing good news here, still with some difficulty. Would you like us to go ahead and introduce the amendment for further discussion that you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Tucker, you want to make the motion on the amendment, and then we'll get it, we'll start talking about it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In order to reflect the recommendations of the staff as it pertains to the implementation of the county's fund balance policy, I wish to amend the budget on third reading to reflect the following change. And all of you should have this in front of you. General fund, $600,000 increase to transfer from reserves. $600,000 to increase to transfer to special revenue capital fund. And special revenue fund, $600,000 to increase, transferred from general fund, $600,000 to increase to transfer to capital projects. That is my motion.
Can we have a second?
Second.
For Mr. Gardner. Now we can use some explanation and discussion, please, go ahead.
As the, as you know, back in March, we immediately began imposing some spending limitations on staff. And so even though revenues in some cases took hits, spending was managed. So we now anticipate that we will be doing, that we will be ending the year 2019-20 with approximately $900,000 net of that. We are required to put at least a third of that into returning to the reserve fund to replace the funds that we took out of it. So $300,000 will go to start paying back the million that was removed from it. That leaves $600,000 that staff will recommend to council, that we put that into our capital project fund. If we don't, if revenues do not come in, we will not spend it. But if revenues do come in, the money will be there, and we can then use to buy some of the capital projects and requests that we did not approve at this point, from the sheriff, from other departments that have needed capital requests, but they are not in the budget you will be voting on tonight. This will give us the ability, should the money come in, to be able to spend that money.
Okay, let's unpack that. Comments? Mr. Connell?
First question, Mr. Carpenter, you mean the emergency reserve fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so one-third of the 900 goes to the emergency reserve fund?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's great. Other comments? Yeah, is that you, Jamie?
I have, I have some questions about what is going into economic development, so I can do it now, wait till we get back to the original-
Sure.
-motion.
I just wanted to address issues since Councilman Connell brought up about the disaster reserve fund. And we're still chasing some of that CARES Act money as well, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's very possible that we could really replace every penny of it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I need some explanation. Can you further explain that to everybody? I'm pretty well read up on it, but-
Yes, sir, the federal government is part of the CARES Act, gave South Carolina approximately $1.9 billion to use in dealing with the COVID issue. Just last week, the General Assembly approved $1.2 billion of that money. Within that $1.2 billion is a fund to reimburse local government for money that they have spent in addressing the COVID issue. Kershaw County had submitted approximately $1.4 million in what we believe are qualified expenses. The, those expenses were included in the governor's proposal. So with the hope and the assumption that the firm that was hired to manage that $1.2 billion will also agree with the governor, then we would be receiving at least part of those funds back as reimbursement. And so upon receipt of those funds, then they would go into the county's general fund for council to use as council associates fit.
Mr. Carpenter is too modest. I started out by saying we had a $3 million hole- I started out by saying we had a $3 million hole. Part of that was the FLO arrangement with LifePoint. Another part of that was hopefully getting this money that few other counties were as aggressive as Mr. Carpenter was in his famous phrase of OPM. And he went out and made sure our needs were known, and we are hopeful it will be favorably considered. When will we know that answer?
Well, it must all be distributed by December of this year, this calendar year. So we should know August, September is the hope that money will be determined. So we'd be receiving it if within 30 to 90 days is right now the hope.
I mean, that's aggressive advocacy by Mr. Carpenter for our county. And in my view, I think that also suggests, one among many reasons why this county is looking at this budget as an interim solution, so we'll come back again when we come back again to look at this budget.
That'd be the council discretion, but perhaps September, after the first quarter.
Interim solution?
Well, because we have more money coming in that will fill in some holes.
I'm picking at you.
Yeah, I know. That's a big word. I'm sorry, Ben, go ahead.
Mr. Carpenter, what was the number that you said the state approved to go to counties, local governments?
Approximately 200, and I believe 20 million of that $1.2 billion was for local governments, hospitals, and entities like that.
Okay, so beyond possibility, do we have any idea what the total ask is? Kind of like, you know, different departments come to us and submit a budget, and we're like, ah, that's way more than we can actually do. Are there much more than $200 million in requests that are going out, or do they give you that info?
No, I mean, essentially, the governor, the governor put in his request to the General Assembly almost the exact equal to what the county's requesting. So he essentially was accepting what they requested. Now, they have hired someone who's not affiliated with the state government to come in and oversee that, accounting firm, something like that, and they'll be the one to crunch the numbers and see if it's actually legitimate.
Yep. Just to toot Mr. Carpenter's horn again, and that of Sandra. It was, our 1.4 ask was put in the Accelerate South Carolina document that found its way across the street to the governor, and now is in the legislature and has made its way through that, so well done, staff. Ben, I think we got a great team. Others on that? Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, I think if you're satisfied with this, Jimmy, you have questions against the main budget, right?
I do, so we...
So why don't we approve this, and then we'll get into the main budget, all right? So all those in favor of the amendment to transfer in the general and special fund on the $600,000 to capital projects and the general fund, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. And we now move into discussion of the main budget with this amendment. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Just have some questions about economic development, going through it. And also look back to the last two years. I know that... 66? Thank you, yeah.
56.
Can you pull up the economic development this year currently, Danny, please?
66, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
66, right.
If you'll, well, anyway, let me go through some of the issues that I'm concerned about. There was, Mr. Carpenter, there was a transfer from reserves of $629,000. And I was wanting some clarification as to what was that transfer for? What was it to pay for?
I don't see that figure. I see a grant match capital for 541,000.
Yeah, well, that's, that was another, I saw the grant match. I've got that. I'm talking about it at the very top of the economic development. 11421640002, fee and lieu. It's right up under the fee and lieu. You got 550,000 fee and lieu.
That 629 is composed of money that has been provided to the county either by the state government or electric co-ops for programs that we do. That, then when you see the grant match capital, that's where it's spent. So as we receive money towards work on, for example, the mega site, the money we receive from the state for that, as well as money we receive from Fairfield Co-op for roadwork within a site, that's, that money comes in, is the transfer from reserves, and then the transfer out shows up under debt service as well as grant match capital.
Okay, let me go down just a little bit. The contracted services, I don't have a ruler. I believe it's with me. I believe it's, let's see, 78,000. What is that, what is that to pay for?
That would be for the Central SC Alliance.
That's the one that we talked about earlier
Yes, sir.
in council that I didn't agree with.
That's correct.
All right, what have they, what have they brought to the table for us?
Debatable.
It is. It is very debatable.
Good answer.
They have...
That was actually a straight answer, to be honest with you.
They provide an organization that the state of South Carolina is very strongly endorses our being a member of.
Why?
Because the state of South Carolina firmly believes that they add value to the regions by marketing a region versus a community, and that we as part of a region are benefited by being identified with a million person market versus a 65,000 person market.
Let me ask you, let me ask this question. What have they brought to the table for us in success?
I have seen very little from...
Nothing. I don't think it's been nothing. I've been here 15 years. But we keep putting more money in, you know, each year, more money into it. I know everybody doesn't agree with me on all this, but that's just the way I feel. I think that 78,000 could be used for something a little bit more than just keep throwing it back into them. I feel like I've been probably the biggest friend to economic development for, you know, identifying some of the issues that have been identified over the last year that were true. That actually came out to be true. It may have been sort of ugly, but it was the truth. So...
Can I speak to that for a minute, Jimmy?
Sure, absolutely.
You are, each of you are, if you recall, are in possession of a letter that is, I would say, in military terms, that Mr. Webb would understand and Sammy would understand, is on the Order of a Summary Court Marshal. It cites a letter we wrote two years ago that I promised you I would pursue, and I have now written the final notice. And discussions are now very active about alternatives, Jimmy, so I think you got the letter. I'm just checking. Did you get it?
I got everything.
Yeah, and everything in there is very clear that we're very unhappy about the lack of deliverables, that they have exceeded what we asked them to do, and they have failed to do what we wanted them to do, so it's not a very happy relationship. Jimmy, you still have the floor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say that I think the position the county's taken through those letters and otherwise is as strong as you can take without taking legal action, or actually withdrawing, or asking for a refund. I've only been looking at it for three years since I've been on council for a more brief period of time, so I've been very interested in return on investment. But I think the hope is they're under new leadership as of last year. Is that right? I think the prior...
About 30 days ago.
30 days, okay. Well, I remember the announcement coming out, so I wasn't sure exactly when he stepped down, but the last director. So they're going to have a new captain at the helm, and I hope that in short time, even with the coronavirus going on, that shows some return on investment for the money that Kershaw County is putting in. Otherwise, we'll have to, have to consider other options.
Yep, I'll have to expand on that since I've I've been responding to your criticisms, and hopefully I've carried the message. I'm not so sure. I wish I could say, Ben, I have the same hopes you do for that organization. I will not go on record here in a public forum, but we have, we have really gone after it. I think your opening statement was true, as strong a statement as could be made. Absolutely true. Thank you, Ben. Back to you, Jimmy.
Thank you so much. Well, and we answered the question about the transfer from, you know, well, I guess when I go back up to the transfer from reserves, I just want to see some success this year in economic development. You know, we just haven't really hit on much. Let me ask you this. We still got the 12, I see there's $12,000 in their vehicle allowance. Is that, that vehicle allowance is for, is it being used now, or is it in there for when you hire your ED?
It's in there when a hire is not being used now, and it may not be used, but it's in there as a placeholder.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. Some things kind of threw me off, and maybe you can just give me some clarification on it. I see that we're at 550,000 in fee and lieu, but then last year it was 750,000 fee and lieu, and the year before that it was 750,000 fee and lieu. I was wondering, what was the reasonings for the drop into fee and lieu?
The reason for the drop in the fee and lieu is because the expenses dropped. We, we calculate the expenses for economic development, then we use the fee and lieu to cover them. As we dropped the expenses, we dropped the amount of fee and lieu. So when Central Carolina, CTC, was pulled out of the economic development budget, that money was pulled out as well, so we no longer needed to transfer that money in from fee and lieu. So the fee and lieu drop was not because of a drop in fee and lieu revenue, it was because of the drop in the spending that was directed toward CTC, CCTC, from the economic development budget.
If I may, thank you. Let me, let me just get some clarification on something. Just moving backwards just a little bit. When we had the, I think it was, no, it was last year, it was the 19, June 1st, 2019 to June 30, 2019, I noticed that in the transfer from debt service, there was $250,000 spent, and we had actually gone over in the budget that year, $250,000. I just wanted just, you could give us some clarification on that?
I don't have that in front of me, so I'm looking at the budget itself, not the working budget, so I can get that to you. I just don't have that in front of me to explain it to you.
Well, and the $750,000, when we had that in the budget, what debt service was that?
The debt service is the contribution...
$17.2 million bond.
Yes, sir, it's a contribution from economic development towards paying for that debt.
You know, I think, I think bottom line, the best thing we can do is just pay that bond off. I've been saying that for years. I think maybe you've been trying to work towards that to some degree.
We will be able to pay it off later this year, or at least pay part of it, should that be council desire.
But I was wondering, and maybe some of my colleagues on council can help me with this. My memory, I just don't remember talking about at that point in time a $250,000 transfer, nor even what it was spent on. And of course, we had, it wasn't budgeted, so, but it was a transfer. If you can check in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I'm sorry, I'm not. So we didn't, anything we spent was...
It was transferred from debt service, and it was $250,000, but yet it wasn't, it was not budgeted last year.
Which, are you looking?
I'm looking from 61, 2019.
Are you on page 66 still?
No, 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 no. I'm going into prior budget last year.
I just don't have that in front of me to look at.
If you would, what I'd like you to look for, I need some clarification on this, and maybe Mrs. Brown can even help us with it. But there was from 61, 2019, we had, of course, we had in the budget, there's a $750,000 fee and lieu, and then there was transferred to debt service. There was zero budgeted, but then yet there was $250,000 put into current expenditure, and $250,000 spent, $250,000 put into it, $250,000 spent, which threw us in the negative for $250,000.
I'll have to get that back later.
If you would, yeah, I appreciate it. All right. Because I do know you're, you had, let me make sure I'm correct on this. I pretty much know I am. But you do have the authority, the county ministry does have the authority to make a line item transfer. Correct, I know that. For example, if you've got a rock line item for rock and gravel on the road, you want to transfer that to gas or take gasoline, transfer that, you can do it. But I don't think, this is why I'm trying to remember what, if you have a budgeted anything, there's nothing to do a line item transfer from, and this is why I'm just kind of curious where that $250,000 why it was put there and why it was gone or used up, let's see. Anyway, if you can get back with me on that, I would appreciate it very much. Just trying to, just bear with me one second, council members. I'm trying to make sure I got everything. I'm not as fast as some of you guys, and faster than some of you. Let me ask you a question, and we can kind of sum this up. On the ED, are you searching now, or are you, you're just holding off? Because I know there's nothing going on at this moment with the virus issued, the pandemic.
I have restarted looking for someone again, the process, with the intention of having someone on board, because I had delighted with this COVID, because you said there wasn't much going on. I didn't feel that was a good time to try to find someone and bring them into the situation. I believe that it's going to be important that we have somebody on board as we come out of it to be able to position us to take advantage of it. So it is important that we have someone. So I am beginning the process of replacing that, filling that position.
Are you revisiting, still open for applications, or is it closed?
No, 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 no. I mean, I'm still, if someone sends one in, I mean, I'm, it's filled until hired, or it's open until filled, I should say, I'm sorry. So I'll be, I'll be looking if someone sends one in, then I'll consider them, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, Mr. Administrator. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? With that, I think we're ready to move to a vote. Ben, right ahead.
One more set of questions. It's not on anything that we can do this year, Mr. Carpenter, but I remember last year we were talking about improvements in family court or relocation, improvements, probate court, the voter registration building, the need for the new voting machines to have climate-controlled facilities. One, I just want to make sure on the security and technology front, are, is everyone, are their needs being met over there, at least at the most basic level? And then, two, how long do you think it'll be before we can actually address those concerns?
We're still pursuing the voting registration, for example. That's when we'd already started the process, plus that was pretty critical. So, so that one is underway right now. It's well underway to getting their new new facility open. Upon that being completed, then the building they're currently in will be used by the solicitor. So there'll be some work to put the solicitor there, which will free up some space inside the courthouse. So there is still work going on to meet their needs and address them. We're still, we're working with the clerk to court and the family court judge, as well as circuit court and magistrate's court, a solicitor and a public defender's office to try and meet their needs. So we are still addressing those needs. In the budget that we're just finishing, those funds will still carry forward and still be applied to the projects.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One quick thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So basically, the budget we're passing has a sort of a temporary, temporary budget, and it has no increases for tax increases, no fee increases or anything like that. But, and of course, it does have the amendments that we made from reserves, which I think that's a good thing. That's why we have a reserves there. I have a big, what is the balance in our reserves right now?
It is the mandated three months of cash and one and a half million plus will transfer three, so 1.8 million in our disaster fund. And then this 600 will transfer into the capital reserve, and so that'll come out of our general reserves.
Which the capital reserve would be total amount?
Well, 600,000 plus the money that's reserved for projects.
Usually, we try to put a million in each.
Well, it won't be a million this year, it's just 600 that we're doing. And if you find out before I do, but the actual amount in the reserves, is it, that's a request. You don't want to see the request. That was scary. General fund changes.
Sandra's coming forward. Thank you, Sandra.
Wait, here we go.
Okay, I didn't hear your question. I'm sorry.
I found it.
You found it?
Yes.
Why don't you stay there, Sandra?
The, counting all those funds, the estimated fund balance for June 30th will be 9.8 million. That's what's in that. Includes the 25% fund balance for cash reserves, 1.5 million in our disaster fund as well.
It includes that?
It includes, yes. So that's 9.8 million.
Capital.
What we're transferring into, into which is fund 930.
Which we do every year. We do every year.
So our unrestricted reserves will be back to zero. We won't have any unrestricted reserves because we're transferring 600,000 that would have been unrestricted into the capital fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we almost always ask this question. I don't know if you have it now, given the experience of the last 100 days. But what's our burn rate, given all the cutbacks you've taken? You've not fired anybody, so we've kept our workforce secure. Do you have the burn rate, or do you want to give that to me separately?
I mean, Sandra, if you have it, but it hadn't changed significantly because we didn't fire anybody.
Yeah.
And the building's been open the whole time, so utilities have been, so our burn rate has been pretty consistent. It's the expenses for travel, for things like that, fuel, that's where we save money. It's the expenses for travel, for things like that, fuel, that's where we save money.
Yeah, just give it to me later.
Mr. Chairman, I had one more question, but I wanted to be polite and let you go.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. However, even though there's no fee or tax increase, the goals are, they're now in the budget?
Well, the goals aren't part of the budget, that's totally a separate issue.
But they voted on with the budget.
Well, the goals were voted on as a separate item by the council. They were already voted on and done, so council voted on those in January.
What I'm saying is that, didn't we at the last, on second reading, put the goals into the budget reading?
Yes, sir. They were discussed, but they were discussed in reference to what was approved back in January. But we haven't added anything. This budget is just the budget. It's the ordinance you see there, but the goals are not part of that ordinance.
Where are the goals at?
The goals are in the, what we passed back in January. So that's not part of this ordinance.
So tonight, tonight, the goals will have nothing to do with the budget tonight?
The goals are direction the council gave me in building a budget. But as I've told council, that with the coronavirus issue, in building the budget, I looked for the basics of keeping the county afloat and operating, and was not able to address every goal the council wanted me to try to address. The goals didn't change, but I was not able to address them. That's what I was sharing with council, my inability to address all those goals for the current situation.
And however, this third reading, as I said, is temporary. We will be, we'll be readdressing the budget maybe October?
Well, this budget is the budget upon approval by council.
I understand that.
Right, so, but in September-
But we also don't know what revenues were coming, so therefore, we're trying to be very conservative.
Yes, sir. So come September, it is quite possible, if not probable, that we'll pull this back open again, based on whatever we know about-
And if we do that, there could possibly be some increases at that time?
Sure.
Possibly.
Yes, sir.
I see anybody would, but there could be.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Carpenter, I have a real easy one for you. Under that budget assumption, the expenses, number six down there, reduce recreation spending, this has got to do with the force we're not having now. It's got nothing to do with maintaining all the parks and so forth, right?
That's on the second page of the assumptions.
Third page. Well, yeah. Last thing on them three-page item you give us there.
Okay. Right, those recreation programs, those cuts are related to the fact that we will not have the full offerings this summer of recreational programs because of our inability to provide the program.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. It had nothing to do with maintaining our parks and nothing else we were doing, right?
No, sir.
Thank you, that's a good answer.
Yeah, Mrs. Snodgrass, sir.
Mr. Carpenter, the fire fee that we enacted last year, how did it do? How's it doing? Are we, is it doing what we needed it to do? Is it tracking for the future?
It's doing exactly what we said it would do, which is it's bringing in a base amount of money. It hadn't changed any. It, one year under our belt, it didn't, it didn't bring in exactly what we thought it would, because we didn't know. So it's, it brought in a little less we thought it would, but it's been enough to maintain what we need to do and keep going now. We are going to continue with the fire plan. However, it will still be an issue that council will have to address, which is that fee and a millage. We did the fee with the understanding that council would discuss at a future point about changing to a millage should the general assembly see fit to allow us to do so.
Right.
That still is going to be out there for discussion. But at this point, the general assembly did not take it up. Therefore, we maintain the fee where it was, and we can make another year on it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And we met with our delegation last week and said, hey, look, give us some help here, because a fee is fundamentally not equitable and fair. But it's necessary. Other comments? I propose we move to a vote. I think we've seen virtuoso performance by Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Sandra. And can we now move to a vote on the budget as amended, and then we'll vote on the final budget? All those in favor, so signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and we now move to vote on the budget as amended. So with all those in favor, any discussion?
I think you just approved it.
I think we just did it.
We just approved the budget.
Yeah, I got tied up with all that discussion. Congratulations, Sandra, you have a budget. We'll see you in about 60 days. All right, move to the next item on the agenda, which is the third reading of an ordinance to revise the airport commission, I believe. And that's on page 85. It's a tab F, and I think it's on the screen. Mr. Carpenter, can you open this up, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have before you for third reading, a revising of our ordinance for the county airport commission. Essentially, it makes some changes that mostly acknowledge the fact that the FBO is no longer out there, and the relationship of the commission towards the airport with that having changed.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
And Mr. Gardner, further discussion?
Quickly.
Yeah, and Mr. Jones.
So, Mr. Carpenter, now Danny Tipper's pretty much overseeing the airport, correct?
Danny and Russ, yes, sir.
Danny and Russ, okay. Well, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I think you've got a good man in Danny running the airport, especially with his background, you know, working on, I never knew he was an airplane mechanic, but I don't want to give him a shout at anyway. And I know the chairman recognized a couple of vets in here, you know, when we were talking about something a while ago, but he forgot that I served in the military too, I was a clerk typist. Don't want to forget that.
Let me see your paper cut scar.
And I have it.
All right. Further discussion? All right, with that, we move to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous again, Mary. Move to item three, and ordinances, an emergency, an item to continue, the state of emergency here in the county. It's a tab G, and it's on the board. It's pages 89 through 90. I think it's held us in good stead. Mr. Carpenter, open it up for me, please.
Mr. Chairman, you have before you for third reading, an ordinance that establishes the measures in allowing virtual meeting attendance and voting by council members, as well as the ability for the chairman and council to change, postpone, or reschedule meetings.
Very good. To be correct, it's not a third reading. With those, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
And for Mr. Gardner, a further discussion? I think Mr. Carpenter and his team have guided us with just precision over these last hundred and some odd days, and I think this has stood us in good stead.
And, Mr. Chairman, nothing's really changing. Nothing's really changing. Pretty much the same.
Yeah. Word for word. Further discussion? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, the state of emergency continues in Kershaw County. I would move to new business. The first item is at tab H, which is approval of the Lugolf Fire Department budget. We were briefed at our last meeting. It's pages 91 through 98, and more detail is on the screen. Vic?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Lugolf Fire presented their budget to us at the last meeting. Council now must approve their budget.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve? I would like to open up some discussion here.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker, that's your district, and Mr. Jones, discussion? Mr. Jones, do you want to leave?
Well, if I can, I just think that the fire chief and fire commission have done an outstanding job. You know, the new fire chief has come in, and he has absolutely just taken what he's had from in the past and made it work. He's been faced with a lot of challenges, but I'd like to call him the magician, because he's really made things happen and put forth a lot of effort, and did not have to go back to the taxpayers. And I appreciate that in him, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments? I second that. It's great to have both fire chiefs here last time, and I recall for you that they're having a rough time meeting the budget and affording their personnel, so we may see them next year. Mr. Bozard?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Boyd? Lugolf Fire Department has their own board of directors. They got their own budget, why are they bringing us this budget?
Because the law requires that Kershaw County Council approve their budget. We don't do their budget, but we must approve it. It's part of the, it's just part of the code laws of the state of South Carolina that was enacted prior to home rule, but it survived home rule. So county council must approve their budget.
Well, I was very curious, I should have asked this last year, but we don't have no control over them. And I was just wondering why we bringing that budget to us? What law says that?
I can get you the law. It's, the law was enacted prior to home rule, but the Home Rule Act has a survival clause in it that says these laws survive home rules. So it's still the law that we must approve their budget. Mr. Bozard, we have had substantive conversations about their budget before, incidentally.
I was just looking at that with Camden Fire Department, you know?
Municipality is different than a special purpose district. They're a municipality, they're a city, a city. But we have substantively looked at it before, this council. By that, I mean, we've gone into detail, and Mr. Tucker's nodding yes, Mr. Jones is too.
Oh, yeah, we're forcing them to raise some fees versus giving them millions.
That's correct.
That's why they're still here to make up for them, never mind.
Yeah, I will say that we've had that discussion about the school district too, but if you're a taxpayer in Kershaw County, and we all are, and having multiple authorities to tax you, it gets pretty burdensome. So whether you like it or not, we are the final firewall against raising taxes in Kershaw County that comes up here. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you made my point, I was just, Mr. DeBoz, it is correct that our delegation has decided that our county is not autonomous when it comes to our school board or our special purpose districts, so we are the firewall, so to speak, for the taxpayer when it comes to these type of things. Is that correct?
Mr. Snodgrass, Reverend Snodgrass, yes, you must approve, you must approve any increase in millage for the school district, and you must approve the budget of the Lugolf Fire District.
Correct.
And those are both, each substantive task that the county in the past has delved into and changed the request.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Jimmy, were you up next?
Councilman Snodgrass, and you, Mr. Chairman, made my point. I tend to agree with our delegation. I don't, I would not want to see multiple agencies or groups out there being able to raise taxes. I think that citizens have a tough enough time with us. You know, I kind of like it the way it is, to be honest with you.
Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons that in our planning session, when we do the retreat, the first question I ask of the school board, are you asking for an increase in taxes? This year, the answer was no. And so the school board gave us the right answer. Other comments? Okay, I think we can vote. And again, I second what Mr. Jones said about our great fire chief down there. With that, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and the fire department has their budget. Move to item number two in a series of items with appointments. And the first one is a clean community commission appointment. Tonight, it is proposed that we do some group and then some individuals. But we have, on a clean commission, we have two reappointments that Mary asked us to do, Gene Hardestt and Bill Nettles. There are some other gaps in there, such as Doug Fielding and potentially Mr. Webb. But tonight, I would ask that we have a motion to approve the reappointment of Gene Hardestt and Bill Nettles. Can I have such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Gardner, somebody else?
Second.
Second, let's see, from Mr. Tucker, discussion? Okay, yeah, please.
Well, since we've been having county civics lessons, I'll ask this. So Bill's appointed by the City of Camden, so do we still make that appointment, even though that's a Camden appointee?
Who's that now?
I see Bill Nettles is a Camden, City of Camden appointee.
Right.
So do we still make that nomination?
We, he's reappointed to the same position.
So the city has put him up again?
Well, no, we haven't. Mary, you have to answer that.
Okay.
Okay, good question, thank you, and so we can approve it. And I will say that this year has been magnificent, interrupted by the virus. We want a major prize, as one of the top counties in the state, but we all know we got a lot of work in this area. So with that, we move to a vote. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker.
That's okay. I just want to make one point there to Mr. Webb, since he's here. If you're seeking reappointment, please get your information into Ms. Mary, so we can handle that as well, please, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bozard.
I believe that would be my nomination instead of by this board, I believe.
All right, Mary will take it up, and we may see that again. Mr. Bozard?
I'll be talking with Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard.
Doug's coming off to go on the airport commission.
Who's that?
Doug Fielding.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to replace him.
That's right, we need to find someone for him, and we need to confirm with Mr. Webb. With that, I think we can vote, all right? So we move to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, good work, Mary, thank you. We move now to the Health Services District. You can see on that page and up on the board, we have a number of people who are long in their tooth. But tonight, we have two action items for Ms. Mary to put up for us. See how I blame you for things, Mary? The two action items is to reappoint three people and to appoint a vacancy. So I'll start out with the reappointments. If we can do that en masse, that's Nick Moore, John Kumas, and Shannon West, correct, Mary? And can we just have a motion to approve their reappointment?
So moved.
So moved.
As Mr. Jones, a second? I didn't hear.
Snodgrass.
David? Very good. With that, it's on the floor, any discussion? Seeing there is none, and recognizing how important this is, and we'll give you an update. I met with Mr. Ogburn, and they are moving into the CON stage of the new old folks home, and I include myself in that bunch, not you yet, Mr. Bozard. But they're moving right along, and they're talking to contractors, so I really can't speak to that. And maybe if you all want a separate briefing, you can ask Mr. Ogburn. But I do want you to know they are moving out. So with that, let's move to a vote on reappointment, and then we'll move to-
My chairman can ask a question. About, not about Shannon West, because it says she finishes a term of Napper. But are Nick Moore and John Kumas finishing out unexpired terms?
No.
No. Well, they would have been appointed to a six-year term in 2015, when they were appointed. You get six-year terms. No, six years. I don't want to call any problems here, but they get a one-six-year term.
I think we have a problem. Let me table that.
Well, one of them can do it, because he's finishing an unexpired term now.
Who's that?
Shannon West is finishing an unexpired term. So she can be appointed to a six-year term, what she would be doing. But I don't know when the term expired, when his term expired, Paul Nappers.
But Nick Moore is in the same category on an unexpired term.
Yeah, we'd have to know when Paul Napper's term expires.
Mr. Chairman?
I think Mary has done the homework, Mary. Are we certified on that or not?
It's always been six years.
There is no ordinance. Correct, it's six years.
Why don't we just put this off, Mr. Chairman?
I think we table it.
Yeah, table it.
And we'll come back, but we can take the appointment. So can we move to that? All right, Mrs. Snodgrass, you had something to say.
Are we moving forward on the appointment?
Yes, please, sir.
I would, I would move that we appoint Eric Gunter to the Health Services Commission.
Can we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Tucker? A discussion on Mr. Gunter?
Who is he replacing?
To be clear, that's for a six-year term.
We'll have to figure that out.
All right, okay, yes.
All right, okay, yes.
I need some more lawyers on this one.
If we're not sure it's six or three, how can we make that appointment? It's six years. Hey, but you know what, Ms. Mary? Even I make a mistake once in a while.
Mr. Chairman.
You do a great job.
Who is Gunter replacing?
Susan Ooten, is that correct?
Okay. 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 I just want to write vacant by... Thank you.
Other discussion? We'll assume it's six years, and we'll go from there.
Not at all.
I think I'm ready to move on this one, unless there's a serious objection. Y'all have had this for, since the last meeting. He is really pretty high caliber, and he has been approved by Mr. Daryl Ogden. I asked him if you on it.
And if I may, if our county attorney says it's six years, I mean, we'll just go with that. And Mr. Tucker, you know it's always been six years.
I'm not, you don't hear me busting a quorum, and I'm just...
You just weren't saying anything.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, this is an important position. I think we now move to a vote. All those in favor signify, and it's approved, and we'll hear a little bit more about three versus six, okay? Next item is the Library Board. We have a vacant position, Susan Durant. It's in your package. And Amy has a second position, Amy Schofield, to fill. And the next time we meet, the proposal here is Mr. John Miller takes Susan Durant's position. Can we have a motion to that effect?
Make motion that Mr. John Miller fulfill the vacancy.
All right, and a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? All right, very good. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, Mr. Miller, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and Mr. Miller is approved. And we'll wait for Amy to come back with another person. With that, we move to the Planning Commission. This belongs to Mike Conley, and he is very keen about this. We have two, one to replace Beth Smith and one to reappoint, and that's Claude Eichelberry. We have no name to backfill on Beth.
I'm working on that, Mr. Chairman, as we speak.
Great, thank you, Jimmy.
So I'll take care of that one.
I know you know how important this is.
Provided the council supports it.
Thank you, sir. So with that, we move to Mr. Tucker for Mr. Eichelberry.
Eichelberry.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Claude J. Eichelberry for another term.
Second. Super guy, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Connell. Any discussion? None discussion. We move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move on to the next one, which is the Recreation Advisory Commission, another important site. We have two here to be reappointed, Steve Zobel and Jeff Neal. And I understand, Ben, you're looking for somebody to take over from Gerald Crates. So tonight, I propose we do a group reappointment for Steve Zobel and Jeff Neal. Can we have a motion?
I say move.
Good.
Second.
So Mr. Jones and Mr. Snodgrass, any discussion? They have been most helpful to us, working with our fine recreation director. With that, I move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for moving through that. The next item is item number seven. There's no enclosure. It's a discussion of executive session policy, and I defer to you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask for an executive session.
Take that down. I know, this is a policy on executive session.
Executive session, dealing with an employee issue, and I ask that council go back, the attorney goes back, as well as the county administrator and the deputy county administrator.
I think you're ahead of yourself there.
Excuse me.
If I could, item number seven on the thing is a discussion of a change in executive session policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. What I want, we'll go to that. I make a motion that we have a discussion on executive session.
Good, and I think a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Connell, please.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, here's where I'm at on that. You know, it seems like for the past couple of times, we've been having executive sessions in the middle of a meeting, and I would like to see us consider having our executive sessions either at the end of every meeting, which we pretty much always had done that for, but that doesn't mean that's always the right way. But it was always done out of respect for the public at the end of meetings. I wouldn't even oppose doing it in the beginning, like coming at 4:30 to 5:30, if we don't want to stay afterwards. But bottom line is, I think to have an executive session in the middle of a meeting, it's, you know, I think it's just more fair to the public if we have it at the end of the meeting, as we've always had. So I'd like y'all to think about that, and you may see something come before you in the future on that from me.
Any discussion further? All right, no vote required.
Just a comment, a little, you know, I was hoping some feedback, but if we don't have any, I'll look forward to it whenever I get back with everybody with something on the agenda.
I think point well taken, not that I agree with putting it in a different time. It's just very hard when the committee is meeting and the public has to wait for us to come back. I take that point, and when I look at the agenda, I always try to move it around and stack it, so we don't do that. But there's some times I've not been able to do it. Mr. Jones, and I take your point. Other discussion? I guess that's it. With that, we'll move on to council briefings, and Mr. Bozard, go at it.
Thank you. Mr. Carford. I rode by, work having at the park down there, and that wooden fence is going up. Is there going to be some littering or riding or something on that fence, or what's happening with that?
Yes, sir, there will be the actual name of the park, which council has approved. So it will be the Water River Veterans Park. We'll be up on that.
On the fence itself, not on that block wall?
No, it'll be on the stone. It won't be on the fence. It'll be on the stone.
Reason I ask was, there's a big gap in between the top rail and the next rail down. I just wondered if something was going in there.
Yes, sir, that was just how they designed the fence.
Okay, well, that thing just don't look good to me. That's why I'm asking. Have you ever seen it? There's a big gap in there, and it's like it's not finished. How about if you could talk to them people and see what's going on with it, why they left that gap in there? It looked like they left one board out all the way down the fence.
And maybe they did. Maybe they're going to, I'll find that out for you. Yes, sir.
It just don't look too good. I've had some questions asked me, and I couldn't answer them. Everyone knows that we spent the $1 million over there on that prime property, getting engineering work and everything done on it. Have we had any prospects on that? Anybody looking at it right now?
No one right now. We did have someone in a few months ago, but not much is happening with big projects like that. So no, sir, nothing came from it.
I'd like to take just a moment and introduce my replacement in January, Russell Brazel. Stand up, son. Let them see what you look like, because they're going to get tired of seeing you in here like they did me. And he even brought his friend out of Columbia, who's an accountant, and he had been going over the budget, and his accountant's been helping him. So this is one dedicated young man there. He's interested in what we're doing, and I'm looking forward to seeing him up here. And I'm interested in leaving him up here and me leaving with my RV. So that's, that's good. Thank you for coming tonight, buddy, to see more of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Connell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one comment on the 2020 census. Maybe some of you or the folks watching online were like me, and if you had recently moved towards the end of last year or early this year, maybe didn't get that letter that was supposed to have the code that allows you to respond. The census is vitally important because it ties the data to budgets and funding and grants and all types of dollars that actually flow to Kershaw County. And they've actually made a way that if you didn't get that letter, and I had recently moved, if you didn't get the letter, it's not available online that has your code to participate in the census for 2020, you can go online, and they actually have a selection for you to participate otherwise by providing some other information. So that's been really useful, I think, for people that were in transition at the end of last year or early this year. And I encourage everybody to participate in the census, because it will mean a lot to Kershaw County in the years to come. I mean, they only do it every 10 years, so let's get counted right.
Amen. Mr. Jones?
No report.
Mr. Snodgrass?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of council, just to be brief, I know we had a discussion on masks earlier, and this is in no way, my remarks are just kind of my own journey and kind of where I came from as far on the masks. Just a few weeks ago, I realized that it wasn't about my protection, and it wasn't about keeping me from getting the virus, but I just came to a realization that there are folks out there who feel more comfortable when other people are wearing a mask. And just through my own kind of self-reflection and spiritual journey, I've come to terms that it is, it's our high calling to do for others over ourselves. And that's not anything to put a guilt trip on anybody else. This is just, I'm just speaking for me, so I'm not saying anyone else has to feel this way. I guess I'm just sharing kind of my own observations. Second, I really, 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 really need my kids to go back to school this fall, so I really need to wear a mask. My wife is a teacher. She really wants to be back in the classroom, so she, so we're, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get us to that point. And then also, along the lines of doing for others, do this whole, these last three months, it's just been awesome seeing so many businesses and our fellow citizens do for other people. We have several businesses that, you know, like Palmetto Stitches and Quilts, who are in other sewing businesses that are, I mean, they're making masks for, just for, just to give away for medical PPE. And there's so many businesses that are just out there doing just for the sake of doing for their fellow man. And it's been a really, it's been really neat, and kind of, in some ways, it gives you hope for humanity when you see people come together. Yeah, there's some ugly things that are going on, but all in all, I'm just encouraged to see how our county is continuing to come together. So if I can just leave with anything, the mask, it's not about you, it's not about protecting you, it's about a courtesy, and it's about protecting other people. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, Russell, I want to say congratulations to you. I don't think I've had a chance to talk to you, and looking forward to working with you come January. Yes, it's good to see a non-Q-tip head up here. And that you have a full head of hair. So I want to say, no matter how you feel, I want to dito on what Mr. Snodgrass, Reverend Snodgrass, as Mr. DeBoz said, wear your mask, and just thank you for being courteous and kind to others. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gardner?
I'd just like to personally thank Mr. Jones for putting on a mask.
Well, I did it for you.
It means a lot. It means a lot, and you influence a lot of people, so a lot of people wear it because you wear one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know about that, but thank you.
Plus, it makes you look better.
All right, I'm going to conclude this, and then we'll go to our administrator and legal briefing. First of all, safety on the 4th of July, obvious. Among that is the mask and how you drive and drink and do things out on the water and elsewhere. So let's take, have everybody back on Tuesday or Monday when you come back. There is a good piece of news, thanks to Mike Conley and Vic Carpenter, and those of us on the Santee Lynch's cog, including Mr. Tucker, is, it looks like we're going to have a bus route. I'm not sure when. It'll go up and down US 1, Elgin, Lugolf, back to Camden and back, and we'll get it for about two years. I'll look for a county briefing on that in due time. We didn't get any help out of CM cog, though. I'll tell you that, Ben. Not a dead gun. Almost got vetoed, and it wasn't their money. I just want you to understand how fun that was. Our next meeting is the 14th of July, Mary, I think. That's correct. And we'll be in the new budget year. I echo what Mr. Connell said and others would say, let's get this census nailed. We're at 62-something percent, right, Mike? We got to make it go. And I echo the congratulations to you, Russ. I also thank April Watch, and I have formally said that to her, for her running. I congratulate Mr. Tucker and Mr. Connell for their stunning victory against a close And with that, that ends my brief. Over to you, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, the only thing I wish to do is just to reiterate what Mr. Connell and yourself just said was the census. Kershaw County is currently number seven in the state in our participation. It's not where it needs to be, but it's 62.3%. The state of South Carolina is at 56.3%, so we're well ahead of the state average, and we're ahead of the national average. So we're headed in the right direction, but we have a long way to go. That's my report.
Thank you. Legal? Nothing, Mr. Chairman. With that, we move to an executive session. I believe, Mr. Jones, you'll take the lead on that with your motion?
I will, gladly. I move that we go into an executive session to discuss an employee issue, and who I would like in that executive session is this entire council, along with the county administrator, the county attorney, and the deputy county administrator.
Very good, and will you need a vote when we come back?
Never know.
We'll need to know.
I mean, probably not. There'd be no vote coming back.
We can deal with that when we come back. So can we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Snodgrass, you second? Very good. A discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Jones? Is this an employee matter, or is this for Mr. Carpenter? I'm just trying to distinguish whether it's for one of the employees.
Let me clarify that for you, Mr. ... I've got this paperwork here somewhere. Because I'd hate to have to discuss this in open session. Just out of courtesy, I was asking for an executive session to clear up a pretty serious matter. But let me just say this, I am willing to do it in open session if it takes it. Anyway, here's what the Home Rule says, and that was a very, I hate to say that, because everybody says it, but that is a good question, because we are county administrator, former government. It says here on section 4-9-660, authority of council and its members over county officers and employees, except for the purposes of, that means we don't have any authority over the employees, only the county administrator does, and that's where you're going. But there's an exception in that. It says, except for the purposes of inquiries or investigations. The council shall deal with the county officers on that matter, and I've got a copy of the law right here. So we have the right, and the reason I'm bringing it to the councils is because that's what this says. We'll be doing what this says here.
All right, further discussion?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just asking. Go right ahead, Mr. Tucker.
So we're doing an investigation, is that what you're using?
No, it says, except for the purposes of inquiries and investigations that it takes. Mr. DeBoz, can you give some clarification on that?
Well, I think Mr. Jones says it's inquiry or an investigation. I mean, that's what the Home Rule Act says. Home Rule Act says you have no authority over employees, they work for the county administrator, except for inquiries and investigations. Talking about county council as a whole, no individual council member. No individual council member would have that right. That right would belong to council as a whole.
And I'm asking out of respect that we discuss this in executive session and hear the information that is provided.
So let me ask you, Mr. DeBoz, and put you on the spot since you already, so you see no quarms with us going into executive session without the administrator calling for the executive session on county employees? That's my question.
Well, the council has to call for an executive session by definition, but having said that, the council can only go in executive session as to an employment matter or inquiries and investigations as conjunctive. In other words, you can have an inquiry, but if you have an investigation, it's another matter. It's a conjunctive phrase. I don't have it in front of me, but I know what it says.
I got it right here.
I know what it says. It says, you, it says, council, county council, has no authority over employees which is subject to the, working, that work for the administrator, that'd be all county employees, except for purposes of inquiries and investigations. I believe that's what it says.
That's exactly what it says.
I think it starts off with except though, then it goes into the rule. Gives the exception to the rule, then the rule, I believe.
You yield for Mr. Conell?
I'm going to yield, yes, to either one.
Say it again?
I'll yield to either one here or there.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Conell?
If Mr. Jones has a question that is so sensitive about an employee matter, he feels like he can't ask it in open session, I'm fine with having an executive session. We'll know real quick whether or not it's a legitimate question or not if we disband the executive session because it's not legitimate. So I'm, let's go ahead and move into executive session and find out what the question is, and then we'll know pretty fast.
Yeah. Mrs. Snodgrass, thank you, Ben.
My point is similar to Ben. So you, so basically we're just, you're going, we're going in to get, ask the question.
We're going to, there's, we're going in as far as an inquiry of an investigation. Yes.
Let me ask, the obvious question is, did, have you inquired of Mr. Carpenter already?
I have spoke to Mr. Carpenter, I have spoke to Mr. Templer. They're very aware.
Are they satisfied, are you not satisfied with their answer?
Mr. Chairman, I've asked for an executive session. If you want to discuss this in open session, I'd be glad to do that.
I just wanted a yes or no. Were you satisfied with their answer?
Am I satisfied with the answer pertaining to what?
To this inquiry.
I don't think I would be going into executive session if I was satisfied.
I'll take that as that you're not satisfied.
Well, I mean, I don't mind telling you how I feel. No, I'm not satisfied because there's some information that I think this council needs to hear. But if this council, if you folks are to the opinion that there's nothing to discuss, you're going to vote me down. I'm asking out of respect the opportunity to share something with this council as a body, trying to follow the home rule. If y'all don't want to do that, you certainly obviously have already spoke about it with individuals. I went to each one of them and talked to them about it because I didn't want to blindside anybody.
Very good. Now, so the answer was he was not satisfied. Other questions? I think we can go to a vote. With that in mind, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. We have Mr. Jones, Mr. Conell, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Gardner and Mr. Snodgrass. All those opposed, signify by raising your hand. That's Mr. Tucker, Mr. Burns. I think we can go into executive session. And with that, we'll see you in a little bit.
I think we got enough to go.
We already had things that could say.
Okay. For those outside the room, we have returned from executive session. We're now reconvened. Can we have a motion to...
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Adjourn?
Second.
Second for Mr. Conell. Discussion.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Goodbye.
The next meeting will be on the 14th of July. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and we are dismissed. Be safe on the 4th of July.